And that law only applies to counties where the law has been enacted. So here in Jackson County, we face the opportunity to offer enacting language in the form of ordinance. If we pass it as a legislative body, it would then become law here in Jackson County. And what it essentially would do is take the tax bill that you're receiving for, let's say, 2023. December 2023, your bill is due. And if we pass this law and make the baseline date December 2022, so a year before, then as somebody who's Social Security eligible, the amount that you would actually need to be paid would be the same as much paid in 2022. So, and that amount would become your amount for the rest of your life. That's kind of the optional state gave us, pass it or don't. It has many areas of interpretation, one of which is when it would become effective and what the baseline date would be. Because of the thing that we're not talking about, the assessment challenges that we have this year, my hope and desire is to enact it so that your 2023 tax bill, if you're Social Security eligible and apply, that you would then only have to pay whatever you paid in 2022. I offer that as a way to help folks who are on Social Security, therefore on fixed incomes, whose homes are a key component of their budget. And I recognize that because of the way the state wrote the law, it has a couple of distinct disadvantages. One is that it leaves out some people. There's people who don't necessarily become Social Security eligible, because maybe they were a school teacher or a public worker who paid into a different retirement system than Social Security. As a county legislative body, we don't have the authority to change that. It might include people who could very comfortably pay more in taxes. The state didn't allow us the latitude to have an income threshold or any sort of thing like that. And then lastly, because it doesn't freeze your assessed value and rather it offers you a credit, that means that everybody for whom the county collects taxes, like school districts and cities, would receive less revenue. So we collect it, but then we pass most of it on to those different bodies. So there's a definite downside to this. I recognize that, and I think we all do. And that's why we thought it was so important to hear public testimony so that we could try to rationalize and say, with this opportunity we've been given, what's the right answer? And that's what tonight's about.
Thank you, Legislature Smith. I do want to echo, I think, one thing that Legislature Smith has acknowledged, and I think it's important that I do it as well, is SB 190 was one of over 150 pieces of legislation that was proposed in the state legislature. It was the only one, in fact, that came out though as a fix for the property tax challenge in Jackson County and across the state. So it was relatively rushed and did not encompass all the solutions for the challenges that we're trying to solve here now. So undoubtedly, it does leave several holes that must be fixed. I think, I will speak for myself here, but I will say that I will commit to continue advocacy in trying to solve more than just the SB 190 challenges, but many of the challenges that are relating to the assessment process. And that is an opportunity for us as a legislative body or as individual legislators to go to Jefferson City and advocate. We do not have much control over the taxation process. Much of it is defined by state statute or within the constitution itself of the state. And so we are somewhat subjected to what is being done to us from the state. And thus, this is our only means for opportunity for relief in this tax situation. So I was also reminded that in the current county, there are around 94,000 or 95,000 kids, I can't remember the last digit, 92,000 kids, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. That are currently within our school districts within Jackson County. Likewise, there are around 115,000 folks who are over 65 in Jackson County. Sean alluded to, there are challenges, right? If we provide an opportunity for some offsets for seniors under SB 190, we could be borrowing from our future by taking away from tax and jurisdictions like school districts. So this is quite a challenging issue, one that doesn't necessarily have all clear answers yet. But I know that many of us commit to finding more solutions beyond just SB 190. For the benefit of including everyone, I want to give our legislator the opportunity to say if he was, if she'd like to before we open things up.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to set, I guess, a level playing field for the discussion tonight, or as you all speak to us about your desires for this. Coming from a school board background, I understand what happens when you don't have funds and revenues coming into the school districts. I also care deeply about maintaining our school districts because those do drive the values of our homes. And so the difficult position that the legislature is in is that providing credits and relief to a certain population that needed, we then have the decision of where we make up that delta elsewhere in the county. And that goes into programs and things like that that the county does fund. And so ensuring that legislation is inputted or put into law in a very thoughtful way and impactful way so that we can have the most impact to the residents, positive impact to the residents as possible, is a huge paramount concern of mine. And so ensuring that we put something into place that is done right and is done the first time correctly, and then add into as situation dictates and as we learn more just about the ebb and flow of values and things like that. And so just kind of want to put that out there because while, you know, it's very easy for, you know, relief and to have that compassion, we have to also consider the ripple effects of any action that we do with any legislation, not just this one. Because there are impacts when you try to do the right thing. So put that out there. I guess we'll just start.
So first up, we have Mr. Mike Carroll. If you would, please stand up to the microphone and give us your testimony.
Okay, I live in Lee's Summit, and I'm a senior citizen collecting Social Security. And so I would be definitely a benefit from this law if it got enacted. I have a question. What's the provisional? There's a section about provisional eligibility. And if I'm reading that right, it just means if somebody's old enough, they're eligible for this discount.
Now it's on. So the idea of provisional eligibility is essentially a temporary workaround where in order to enact this and have it be reflected on people's tax bills between now and November 2023, we feel like the opportunity for the county to be able to process inbound paperwork for every senior would be extremely challenging. And so what we're saying is that we're going to assume, if you're beyond a certain age, that for this year, we're assuming you're eligible. And then you would subsequently give us evidence of that. So the idea is really not to do anything other than speed up the process before this year's bills can go out. Because by the time we pass this bill and then the department who needs to collect that information is properly staffed, the opportunity to do all that work would be unlikely to be finished in time for it to be reflected on the 2023 tax bills. But you still will have to prove it just by before we send that bill out.
So this is not a way for people that don't get Social Security to get this tax credit?
That's not its intent, that's correct. It's intended strictly as a time-based way to speed things up just for this first time.
Well, I would support, I know, I heard what Megan was saying about the school districts need the tax money, but what I'm concerned about is if people that can't afford these big increases, unless they were successful in getting them reduced, you might force some people out of their homes. So that's, so for my own situation, that would, you know, I was able to reduce my tax liability by like $1,500 per year. So if I had to come up with that, that would have been a big challenge. And we might have to move. And I know there's lots of people that are probably in the same situation. So I know that it's a sticky situation, like you said. You don't want to cut so much tax that you're penalizing schools or whatever other services aren't provided, but yeah, it's, but I would support, I guess from a purely selfish standpoint, I would support the ordinance to be enacted. So we could stay in this area because we love it. I guess that's all I understand. Anybody have any questions? Clarification?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Dr. Rodriguez, it looks like you are up as well.
Thank you, sir. As I said, I'm Dr. Rodriguez, the superintendent here at Grand UC Ford. Definitely happy to speak to you tonight on behalf of the administration here, but also Board of Education. Certainly have at least one of my school board members here, another one on the way. But not only the 3,900 kids that we have here, but as you mentioned, 92,000 students within the Jackson County public school systems, which again are all committed to providing high-quality education every single day. I certainly want to thank all of you for coming out this evening. And certainly want to appreciate you, Mr. Barca, appreciate Legislature McGee for proactively encouraging participation throughout. As school leaders, we understand the desire to support our senior population and believe that together communities can find productive means to support each other, including those who experience any type of financial need. However, I understand the need to provide this relief. The ambiguous language contained within the ordinance certainly makes this process feel rushed and irresponsible to go forward with as presented. As you may know, the majority of our funding does come from the local revenue, which is used to meet the needs of our students, whether that be academic or social-emotional. While no one can confidently say the exact financial ramifications of this ordinance, as you mentioned already, widespread tax relief, especially without any needs-based assessment, is going to have a negative impact on all tax and jurisdictions. School districts rely heavily on property taxes to fund essential services, including hiring our qualified staff, maintaining facilities, providing educational materials and programs. Our district alone is approximately 59% locally funded. Some of you, as you mentioned as well, being former school board members, know that school districts are capped, the amount of increased local funding they are able to capture by the Hancock Amendment. So we're certainly not going to see increases needed to offset any losses of this proposed ordinance, nor are we going to receive any massive windfall from the huge increases in property assessments in which this ordinance appears to be trying to provide relief. Over 80% of our current operating budget is spent on our amazing Grand UC Ford staff members. In recent years, many areas of districts, including us, have increased teacher pay to be more competitive, all while teacher compensation in our state has historically finished near the bottom nationally. Additionally, in response to post-pandemic learning, we have increased our efforts to provide our students and their families with needed social-emotional supports. We've also focused intently on academic interventions and tutoring, providing as many opportunities for accessibility and connectivity to the internet, making our schools just healthier environments, including providing meals to ensure our students' basic needs are met, and equipping our staff at the same time with professional development and resources and time needed to improve learning for our students. Even with the stagnant funding at our state level, which has increased only 4% over the last 15 years, the Grand UC Ford school district has been able to academically perform at a rate higher than we did pre-COVID and show three-stage years of academic gains in both reading and math. Without proper funding, with possible decrease looming, the reality is that many of our efforts could be diminished or eliminated. This doesn't even account for the struggles that our schools have experienced through shortages in our instructional staff, as well as in our support areas, such as custodial, food service maintenance, and bus drivers. Bottom line is our school districts were very hard to be good stewards of taxpayers' monies. And we set our budgets months and years in advance to ensure we are ready for whatever may come along. To even remotely consider having this ordinance impact our current 2023 budgets would be detrimental to our ability to ensure financial stability, knowing that we have already signed contracts for this school year, as well as agreed to terms for items such as paying back our bond debt. With less revenue schools, along with every school, tax and jurisdiction in the county will be faced with the decision to either cut staff or programs, or likely both, or seek tax increases in the future. As Board of Educations will find it difficult to cut programs or staff, as that would be detrimental to our children, they will undoubtedly have to seek a tax increase. As such, these increased taxes will shift the burden of funding our public schools onto our other residents, including working families and individuals already struggling financially, as well as local businesses. All of this could lead to population shifts, as we mentioned already earlier, and residents needing to leave to more affordable parts of the state. In conclusion, while we improvise for the desire to provide property tax relief for seniors, especially in light of the well-documented challenges discussed tonight with the current assessment process, we firmly oppose the current proposed measures presented by the legislature. And we hope that you will consider delaying this vote, like many of the other counties in the state have done, in order to fully study its potential impacts. The challenge to what you face is exactly what you said earlier, that this ordinance might be implementing one solution, but it's entirely possible that due to the high potential for future litigation, it could actually end up being something completely different on the other end. Reducing property taxes for all seniors ahead of any needs testing for financial impact and without any needs-based qualification will harm our school districts, exacerbate funding disparities, and limit educational opportunities for our kids. We believe it's crucial to find a more balanced approach to better support our senior population without compromising the quality of education in the future of our schools and local communities. So appreciate it. Thanks very much for the opportunity to be able to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Looks like we have Jason Snodgrass, and I imagine we have some more doctors here, so forgive me if I'm not capturing that well-deserved title. And feel free to correct me as well.
Good evening. My name is Jason Snodgrass, superintendent at schools of Fortisage. We have 5,000 students who walked through our doors yesterday. We have approximately 800 staff members. So I'm going to not just read, but just kind of have some comments. And I would reiterate much of what, and you'll hear a lot of the same things that Dr. Rodriguez spoke of. We are very collaborative and we're proud of that in our region and the entire metro. And I also concur that I not only concern myself with certainly the 5,000 students that we have at our school district, but certainly the entire metro in Jackson County and the 92,500 students that walked through the doors this week. We take that very seriously. We're very passionate about that. And I would also echo that I'm certainly not here to speak against any tax break for senior citizens. They are very important to everybody in our communities. They typically are supporting and very supportive of our school districts. We're talking about former educators, a lot of times who stay in our communities. We're talking about parents, grandparents, who still are in our community. So we, we're very passionate about being able to find solutions to be able to help them. But with this current ordinance, the way it is written, it has many concerns and unanswered questions. First of which is, it is this current budget year that would impact. As Dr. Rodriguez mentioned, we are already two months into the current budget. We have to pass our budget by June 30. We're required by law to do that. We've signed contracts, folks are there, they're working diligently. And as, as mentioned, we are currently 50th in the nation in salaries. That's the last in the entire United States. And we're working to increase that so we can have quality educators in our classrooms, quality bus drivers driving our students. And they deserve that. That would have an immediate impact on our budgets. The problem is, beyond that, we don't know how much. And to be able to determine the next steps are a great concern for us, a large concern. We don't know how many senior citizens live in our district. We don't know how many own properties in our districts. And to know how that would truly impact classrooms is a concern. Beyond that, I believe that it would simply be shifting the tax burden to younger adults, many of which have younger children, who struggle to also pay their tax bill, who also struggle to live day-to-day in this high inflation rate economy we have. So I just ask and reiterate that we slow down. In my opinion, this is not a race. We want to make sure to get this right. We need to do research. We need to slow down, consider what all the concerns are, and be able to address those concerns and answer those concerns before something is implemented. Specifically, again, going back to 2022, making that the base year is certainly a concern. Even at a very minimum, if it was 2023 as the base year, that would give us a little time to get our feet under us and make some informed decisions. And we're together. We're all about partnerships. We're all about communication. We're all about sitting down in the same room and finding out solutions together. And I for one would be willing to do that. Sit down together, talk, discuss, and come up with a good solution that makes sense for everybody. My concern is that the 5,000 students in our district and the 92,500 students across the metro will be impacted, be impacted immediately. Whether that's programming, whether that's indirectly through the teachers in front of them, that's a huge concern. Another question I pose, because it was mentioned, it just brought up a question. Does the current ordinance, the way it's written, freeze the assessed value? Or does it freeze the amount paid in taxes?
Yeah, so it specifically freezes the amount paid in taxes. So it does not impact assessed values, which would continue to go up and dependent upon how much of this finance stuff everybody in the room is into, that creates some interesting implications as you guys set budgets and levy rates associated with the Hancock Amendment, new construction and all that stuff. So that's, when I say I recognize it's complex, it's complex.
So to be clear and understanding this, so if somebody has a tax bill of $5,000, they would pay a $5,000 tax bill on that property this year, next year, and until they no longer own that property?
Yeah, so if we enact with '22 being a baseline year and then start in '23, if for example, our friend in the front row had a tax bill in last year of $4,500, and this year, we did the calculation based on the school district levy rates, and not just schools, but all the levy rates, and whatever his assessed value was, and maybe he's supposed to pay $5,500 this year, he would get a credit for that $1,000. So he would still see a bill that says $5,500 minus $1,000, like he got a gift card from the state, and then he only has to pay $4,500 for his full liability to be met. And then that in turn gets sent to you guys in the schools and the cities and the library districts, and the proportion, proportionate amount that we didn't get because we issued the credit in accordance with the state law would be reduced. There is a provision in the state constitution that says if they were to enact a home sit credit, that the state has to reimburse all locals for it. The question of, since they passed this law, but didn't fund that in the budget, the question of how and when they will fund that is one of those open questions that we're grappling with. So it's not the intent necessarily, I don't think, for anybody to see the schools get less money. Some of it would come from the state, at least according to that article of the state constitution. But those are among the things that we're trying to figure out.
I think there's another question about what happens if you issue new levies. And that in itself also has to be figured out.
And that's, that's the point I was going to make to my earlier point in clarification. Thank you for that, is again shifting the tax burden. And so therefore, if there is less funding for the school districts locally based on this ordinance, and if there is a need for an increase in levy, that would again shift the tax burden to younger folks, which again, I understand and want to reiterate the fact that I'm not opposed to any helping senior citizens. But again, I believe there would be better solutions than this. So thank you.
I forgot a pen, so I have to digitally take notes. Oh, thank you, Sean. Next, we welcome Dr. Hurrell from Independence.
Good evening. My name is Dale Hurrell. I'm superintendent for the Independent School District. I'd like to start by stating that the Independent School District supports both senior citizens and finding a common sense solution for those who need property tax relief. All of us probably here can agree that SB 190 is flawed, ambiguous, and will likely lead to legal challenges. I'm here this evening to ask that the Jackson County Legislature slow down and take time to come up with a solution that is fair to all involved, will pass legal challenges, and help ease the burden of those who need the tax relief. The reassessment process has created a significant amount of displeasure within Jackson County, and ordinance 5774 appears to be a carefully crafted political move intended to take attention away from the real issue at hand, and that's the property assessment process. I'd like to point out several of my concerns with this ordinance. First of all, the ordinance does not place an income limit on those who might qualify for the tax credit. An individual whose home is worth millions would never have their assessed valuation or their tax bill reflect the true market value and therefore a fair property tax amount. This will place an unfair burden on others who do not qualify for the tax credit. Taxing jurisdictions will be forced to adjust levies to account for the loss of revenue and therefore artificially inflate those levies to make up for that loss of revenue. There is no fiscal impact known, nor is it clear who will qualify for these credits. Since teachers, fire, or railroad workers do not qualify for Social Security, I'm assuming that they would not be eligible for this. And at what age would someone be eligible? Is it at 62? Is it at 65? This ordinance requires that the tax credit provided be considered revenue received by the taxing jurisdictions. This will make the aforementioned tax credits subject to the Hancock Amendment. Taxing jurisdictions will be required to enroll their levy back, thus reducing potential revenue, but then forced to pay a portion of the property back as a form of a tax credit. This for us, since our budgets have already been set, could make school districts default on bond payments. To my knowledge, no plan has been presented on how the county will identify, track, and then refund tax credits associated with this ordinance. This seems to be another burden placed upon the assessment office at a time in which the Board of Equalization has yet to finish appeals. I fully understand and appreciate the pressure you are under as county legislators due to the unhappiness of the Jackson County property owners that they have regarding their assessed valuations. I am simply asking that you don't try to find a short-term political fix at the expense of creating a long-term financial crisis for those of us who are trying to serve your constituents. Thank you.
So I did this at the last event, so I want to make sure I clarify for the public consumption what controls we do have as a legislative body, because I think this is pertinent, given the last statement. We have asked for data on the assessment process multiple times. We've received no data from the executive's office, from the assessment department, from the Board of Equalization. That is clear and concise and encompassing of all information. I think portions of it have been shared with us, but not in its entirety. In addition to that, the legislative body does not hire the assessor. The executive does. The legislative body does not appoint the Board of Equalization. That is the executive. So the assessment challenges, I think all of us at this table and many as well of our colleagues have all clarified is a problem that I think we just nearly all supported calling in the state auditor because it is so much of a problem that we believe there's missing information that needs to be found from someone with a higher authority. So I assure you, Dr. Hurrell and others, that this is not an effort within our legislative authority that we have not challenged and called to task. Unfortunately, there's not been much response from those who have that ability. I don't want to misspeak for the body here, but I think when it comes to the assessment process, the only, I think, impact we can have is fiduciary and even the incurred by the collection of the tax of the taxing jurisdictions. So there are some checks that don't have balances, unfortunately, and that's, I think, something that we are seeing as a challenge and probably something that I at least will advocate for changing from the legislative side. I want to open that up to my colleagues. If there's any comments or thoughts around that quickly, I just want to make sure folks know that there's limited ability we have to impact and change the assessment, which is why I think we're so quick to see any solution that could allow relief to occur happen. So that's, I'll pause there and see if I did my colleagues.
Yeah, I just want to, I guess, speak myself as well and say while it is important that we enact something that does have impact, as we've seen with the assessment process and how it's ruled out not just this year, but in 2019 as well, it's very important that we have processes in place so that we don't have kind of a mess, right? Additionally, with this legislation as well, with any type of tax relief, it's very important that the process is clear so that those who are eligible for the credit, know they're eligible for the credit, they know how to apply for it, and those taxing jurisdictions that will be impacted by any type of reduction in revenue, they also understand what that impact is, and they're able to properly prepare for that as well and just providing those processes and that information ahead of time instead of kind of making it up as we go, as if anyone who's done an appeal kind of feels like that's what that process is. So it's one of my concerns as well to ensure that any type of implementation of any type of relief is done in a way so that everyone understands completely what is happening and what they need to do and what their role is in this entire process.
So I just want to clarify one thing from the last speaker who was concerned about the workload and capacity of our assessment department. There are a lot of people in that department. They're working very hard. This particular bill, because it's a credit on someone's tax bill, the actual calculation after we receive levy rates from all taxing jurisdictions and then have an assessed value, which is distributed by the assessor to the local jurisdictions, after all that's done, it's actually the collections staff within Jackson County. They're presently fully staffed. They're waiting for a month's, a lot of tax bills and questions that they get each year. But this is not necessarily directly related to them or to the assessment department, I should say. So I just wanted to make that clarification. The other thing I'm gonna ask, and not for now, but it would help me, I like to do everything I can to get as much data as possible associating with decisions. If those who are part of a school district or municipality could tell us what percentage of their total budget is residential real estate, because we know that we're trying to determine fiscal impact, we can get a pretty good ballpark on how many people are seniors based on census data. And so if we had an idea of how much of your budget is driven by residential real estate taxes, that's the portion of the budget that this could impact, and then we could extrapolate maybe some decent numbers. They're not going to be perfect. But the numbers that we're gonna apply the levy rates to are not going to be perfect because of the number of appeals that are outgoing. So there is always some level of estimation. I think all the professionals in the room and everybody in the audience probably appreciates that. But that would be fantastic for me if anybody is willing to email us that information, just residential real estate property taxes that reflect your total budget.
Looks like next we have Steve, is it Shelter? Shelton.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Steve Shelton, I'm the Associate Superintendent of Operations for the East Summit School District. Ms. Marshall was a great board member in our school district, and so thank you for your service and also thank you for your service on the county legislation, legislators. Mr. Carroll, thank you for being a member of our community and a taxpayer. Thank you. We have a wonderful relationship with our senior citizens. Our senior citizens have supported our school district through levy increases, bond campaigns, they volunteer our school district, they send their children, grandchildren through assistance. And we in return have provided a school system and education for their children, for their grandchildren, been a point of pride for our senior citizens. And we enjoy and appreciate that wonderful relationship that we have with our senior citizens. Each year, each fall, we hold a public hearing for our tax rates. Our senior citizens come to us and they tell us about what their needs are as far as where that tax levy needs to be set. And we listen, and we listen to them each and every year, and we thoughtfully and we mindfully place that tax levy at a place where we can do two things, where we can help our senior citizens and all our senior citizens maintain that lifestyle that they so want and so deserve, but also maintain that school system they have such great pride in. And so we appreciate that relationship that we have with our senior citizens. So all of our comments tonight and the comments of those who have come before me, it's framed in that relationship. We love our senior citizens and we want them to thrive and enjoy the lives they have in our community. So we come to you asking for your sensibility. Ms. Marshall mentioned, we need to be mindful, thoughtful, we need to understand the impact of our actions. And our school districts are very mindful and thoughtful, trying to understand the impact of decisions we make in regards to curriculum, instruction, our facilities. Everything we do in our school district is very thoughtful, mindful, and calculated with the purpose, and at least some, that's preparing each student for success in life. And so to do that, we need the resources to get that done. And that process of ensuring success for our students in their lives isn't, it takes days, it takes weeks, it takes months, it takes years, it takes decades. And to put programs in place that are sustainable, we need predictability. We need sustainable sources of revenue so that we can fund our staff. And 84% of our operating budget goes toward salary and benefits of the people that spend days and weeks and months and years with our students. It goes toward our facilities, it goes toward resources, instructional resources. But to do that and to do that long term, we need stability. Our current revenue sources and public education in Missouri, they're drying up. The state revenue, the state's allocation toward public education has been flat for years. We're not seeing increases in federal revenue sources as well. You asked about property taxes. I'll tell you overall property taxes, not necessarily residential. 65% of our overall revenue comes from our property taxes. We depend heavily on our property taxes to provide that world-class education to 18,000 students ages 3 through 21. We have an obligation to provide that. One item that hasn't been talked about in great depth, and we've talked a lot about education and the operating impact on our operating budgets, but on the debt service side of our budgets. So our operating, our levies, as you know, are made up of two parts, two levies. You have the operating levy and the debt service levy. The debt service levy is a promise, if you will, that we have made to those investors in our community, in our facilities. We have obligations, that debt, to pay down that debt for 20, 30 years. Those payments are scheduled and in place for the days and the years and decades to come. This creates uncertainty. And if the revenue to pay down that debt declines, we're going to have to want to do one of two things. We're going to increase the debt service levy to make those payments, or we have to dip into our debt service reserves, which is only a year, a year's worth of revenue, a year's worth of reserves. And eventually, we are going to have to raise that debt service levy to make up for that so we can meet our obligation. The other part of this is regarding debt service is our bonding capacity and our bond rating. Each time we go out to our community and go out to investors, we go through a bond rating process. We sit down, we provide a lot of documentation, we have interviews with the rating services, and they ask us about our communities. They ask us about the access we have to revenue, how stable is it? This could have an impact not just on our rating, our rating, but also the rating of the county and the fire and other taxing jurisdictions. So my colleagues that have come up before me have done a wonderful job of explaining what this means to them. What this means to us is that it puts in jeopardy our ability to plan and have a stable revenue source that we can plan and prepare our students for success in days and the weeks and the months and the years to come. Our ask, my ask, is the same as they asked before, slow down. Slow down and let's have a conversation. You're highly intelligent people. You're surrounded by highly intelligent people. There are highly intelligent people in this room who are willing to sit down at a table with you. We have great examples of other states who have done something like this and have a really good model for us to follow. And we should sit down and take a moment and take a look at what they're doing and put something in place, long term, not a short fix, not a quick fix, but a long-term fix that will benefit all of our taxpayers, that will benefit our senior citizens, those who are in need and need this tax relief. Thank you.
I will remind you as we near the end of our sheets that I have, if you are interested in speaking, please make sure you sign up with the team that's outside the auditorium doors here, and they will let us know. We will welcome up Ms. Nola Wood.
I appreciate you holding these hearings, and I really hope to bring some perspective. I am president of a homes association near Grand V Road in Red Bridge. We have 600 homes built in the 50s, and so many of our homeowners are in their 70s, 80s, 90s. Many of them, I think, probably didn't even realize what was being sent to them in that letter from the assessment department, but the ones that did have been calling me and calling others and have cranked the numbers, and they're trying to figure out how in the world they are going to afford $50 or $100 or $200 more a month on mortgage payments or maybe thousands more on a bill that is going to be hitting at the end of the year. And everybody wants the schools to have what they need, but at a time when families and senior citizens and school districts, everyone in this room have already been hammered by inflation, it's really, we've all been called upon to become better money managers. And so our hope is that perhaps these various jurisdictions could somehow get along on the same income they had from the 92-year-old who called me and doesn't own a computer, had no idea what to do about appealing his increase. But perhaps somehow people could not be sounding alarmed, thinking they're about to be robbed of resources, when in fact, we're just talking about stopping a massive increase to people who are our good neighbors and who want to support our school districts and our libraries and our mental health and all of these things. So I would really love for everyone to step back a little bit and regain perspective that a lot of regular people who've already been, you know, really challenged due to inflation are now facing another significant inflation from the county, and they, many of them haven't done anything about it, not to mention the ones who have spent lots of time and gone and waited for hours and appealed and maybe gotten good results, maybe not. But there's a big picture here and the level of, there are many different levels of this impacting our communities. One of the levels is that some of our neighbors, and I've already seen an increase in for-sale signs going up, but because the mortgage rates have increased, those sales aren't going quickly like they had been the last year or two. And so they're wondering if they're going to be okay. And then there are the ones who say, well, I'll just sell it to that guy who pays cash for houses. And that guy who pays cash for houses is some absentee landlord from another part of the country or another part of the world who then rents it to someone who's a drug house. So we had a 92-year-old who kept their law and mode and obeyed the law, and instead we have a drug house in that same house. That doesn't benefit our communities. The other thing that happens, unfortunately, is the people who say, well, I didn't do anything, I'm just going to let it go into foreclosure. So then the county has the expense of foreclosure, and at some point, a lot of unknown factors can occur. And so I would ask our friends who are dependent upon these taxes to please maintain perspective, and I appreciate you all coming and listening because there are many levels of concern here. Thank you.
I have been frantically trying to text my legislative assistant to make sure I'm not missing anyone. She's not responsive. So, go ahead. Please welcome yourself up here to the microphone and introduce yourself to the rest of us.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jim Dunleavy. I've lived in the Jackson County area for now 60 years, been in the same residence for 55. I went to work for the county way back in 1992. I spent 25 of the best years I've ever spent in county government. So I kind of got mixed perspective here, and I want you to bear with me for a second as we talk about this tax levy or whatever. The people I know in the central city have been the most stable people ever. Now, when I say stable, when I started this job 25 or so years ago, I looked at the tax revenue sources because it was dependent upon a drug tax, which you all know is combat. And I looked at how many people actually pay their taxes. And I was astounded to see that the older people were, the more inclined they were to pay their taxes, not only religiously, but on time. When I looked at the people who were sort of fluid in their ability to pay taxes, it was sort of those come lightly, real estate savvy kind of people, with no disrespect to people in real estate. But I'm saying to you, stability of the county government is an earmark that you're not going to hear a lot about. Now, while others may talk about the threats of less revenue, I want to talk about the stability of county government. Because if you look at those figures, I think you will still find that most people who are most concerned are usually the most stable taxpayer. And sometimes that is not recognized, considered, or even invited to tussle. I'm here tonight to talk about those people who grow old in our neighborhoods. Now, when they grow old, they just don't grow old, they're the first ones down there when those November tax things come out and they're paying their taxes by the way. They're not in that line on December 31st when everybody's trying to pay their taxes outside after county government closed down. Now, I looked at those way back to 1989. I was surprised to see that sometimes senior citizens' stability is just as important as those who are economically inclined to talk about the future. I just want to say that on behalf of all my friends who are still in the neighborhood that I am there. They've been there a long time, and I think the lady who spoke before me said that. And I just want you to know that I understand where you're coming from. I understand the difficulty that you face, but most importantly, conservatism may be a new word that I now embrace. Stay with the ones that brought you to the desk. Thank you. They've been there a long time and I think the lady who spoke before me said that. And I just want you to know that I understand where you're coming from. I understand the difficulty that you face, but most importantly conservatism may be a new word that I now embrace. Stay with the ones that brought you to the desk. Thank you.
Uh, any other individuals willing to testify? Please join us up here in the mic and introduce yourself if you would. Yes, thank you, Green Day.
Thanks, Jess. I really appreciate it. 103-degree temperature that we all hang out. My name's Ellen Cardell. I live in Sugar Creek and I am a very low-income senior and I would lose my house over this. And I'm not feeling inclined to have the school boards balance the budget on my back and my house and my ability to be a homeowner. I have been homeless before, about 10 years ago. I don't want to have, have that happen again. The bigger issue, of course, is the assessment. I was assessed a 91% increase. It's not something I can even come close to paying. So look me in the eye and tell me what you want to do for people like me. I live on a street, my next-door neighbor is on disability, his taxes increased 75%. My two other people up the street, very elderly people, had large increases too. I don't know the percentages, but large unjust increases. We do need a quick fix. We knew, you know, I know it's a Band-Aid. I do have one question, so that's my statement. Um, how would this, would this be a replacement to the current low-income refund of property tax credit? I mean, is... Okay.
So, so the existing low-income tax credit, uh, would continue to be in place? Uh, this would, uh, in, in my mind, uh, and as intended, it would offer additional protections? And actually those low-income tax credits, as I understand it, each year that budget gets exhausted. So there's people who should be eligible that can't get it because this would freeze the amount that would be payable, uh, from people that are social security eligible. It would actually allow that low-income tax credit to be used for more people because they wouldn't be trying to cover as much money. So I hope that helps clarify.
And I just, I hope that this does not turn into a, a battle round between regular low-income younger people and senior citizens, you know, like you're getting this, I'm not getting this, and disabled people. You know, it's sort of hitting us all against each other. All, all I can say is I, I, I am strongly in favor of this and I hope the good is due. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other folks wanting to testify? Uh, do want to acknowledge, uh, our chairman is, is just walked in, a former Grand V High School, which you graduated, right, Dr.? Just kidding. We were classmates, a- as well as, uh, legislator Peyton, uh, and legislator Kenny Lowers, uh, staff was also here as well, uh, from the legislature. Um, Dr. Southwick, uh, I think, uh, you had asked to speak after...
So I'm Kenny Southwick. I, uh, am the executive director for the cooperating school districts of rural Kansas City. We represent the 12 school districts in Jackson County and we have a total of 34 districts on the Missouri side that we represent. So I'm here tonight to speak, um, for those 12, for the, for the ones that were not able to be here either on Tuesday or Thursday. Um, I want to start off by thanking Mr. Barca and some conversations. Not everybody knows, but this was to be slated to be passed on Monday, uh, this week without input. And we want to thank you all for the opportunity for us to come provide the input, uh, to talk a little bit about some of the questions and the concerns we have, at the same time be able to express the concerns we have for everybody involved. Um, so thank you very much. I want to start off by saying, and I, I had talked to, to legislator Barca about this. The dilemma that you guys face right now is that you represent both of these groups that we talked about tonight. You represent, I think, 115 or 117,000, um, senior citizens that are out there that have tax bills, as we've heard tonight, people will struggle with that. At the same time, we've got 92,503 students. I did a little extra research, that doesn't include our early childhood kids. So we, we really have more than that, but that's moot. Your dilemma is you're responsible for both of those groups. The decisions that we make, you're responsible for both of those. And that's the main reason that we ask that. We don't understand why on maybe, what, 15 or 16 hours after the law becomes enacted, Jackson County has to be first to put this thing in place. We don't understand that. We want to work to come up with a solution that helps everybody in this room. All of our school-aged people, all of our teachers and all of our retired people. Guys, I'm 69. I am senior citizen. Um, so I see both sides of this. You know, our, our concern is, and with no disrespect, legislator Smith, but when you talk about the state giving a card to the senior citizens, it's not the state. It's not the state's money. It's the county's money. And what happens is that that card is coming, what we believe, from our students and from our staff members that have been hired or under contract based upon a budget. You know, I want to, I want to talk a little bit about what we've heard tonight is you guys have struggled to get data. That's got to be frustrating, absolutely. Um, our superintents have struggled to get data. They got into a mid-area assessed valuation, they set their budgets on, they won't find out until maybe the second week of September and won't even know through the appeals what their true assessed valuation is, that they're going to set their levies on. Everybody here is struggling to get the data that they need. There's no way that we can know what the fiscal impact is on our school districts or our senior citizens. I was at the meeting on Tuesday night and I would venture to say, there are a lot of senior citizens that we have that don't understand any of this process and probably won't take advantage of it unless there's a campaign to roll it out. I've talked to superintents that are willing to help roll that out to help their senior citizens, but we've got to have time. We ask you to push, push pause and to be able to work through the process, not enact this ordinance with tremendous ambiguity on Monday, but do it further down the line. Now, we know you got to get your tax bills out by November, that's a big challenge. I think it's a big challenge for you anyway, even if you didn't enact, um, 5774. I think I got that number right. So I'm here to represent our, our school districts. I'm here to represent our, um, retired personnel, our senior citizens, so that we can find a way to enact this so that everybody has an opportunity to win in this. Um, you know, I'll use this gentleman right here. He was able to knock these taxes down to $1,500, but if this goes into effect, it's no increase. I want to apply this question, I haven't been able to answer this, but, but I'm going to ask you and maybe you all know. If the tax liability for a senior citi- citizen in the year that it starts, I'm going to use a small number because I'm a small guy, if it's $1,000 and that's based upon the levy that year and what the assessed valuation of property is, and that's frozen forever, what if the, the valuation of their property declines? Or what you'll see is adjustments to levies, which would reduce that amount of money that they're frozen for. Are they frozen? Or do they get a chance to pay that lower tax? It's a question that's not been answered, but I think we have to be able to answer.
Well, I was going to say, Dr. Southwick, you had some great questions, the last one as well, that we have the author here that may be able to provide some of those clarity. So, I don't know, Sean, if you feel comfortable answering this one or...
Yeah. So, so the credit, the, the way it's specified in the state law and we've tried to further clarify it in the county enacting ordinance is, uh, essentially, once the calculation's done, as though the credit didn't exist, uh, you take that amount and you subtract that from the baseline amount and you get the credit amount. Uh, I don't think that anybody ever contemplates that that would be a negative credit and therefore the senior would have to pay more. So if, if the, let's say 24, tax liability of Mike in the front row was going to be $1,000, um, and, and then in 25, his tax liability, because his assessed value went down and was only going to be $800, then he wouldn't get a credit. It would just be his $800, uh, because that's less than what his original payment was, that levy baseline. Is that, I, I feel like I'm trying to clarify something and I need a whiteboard, but that's my consulting background, I suppose. That makes sense?
All due respect, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
Um, and, and it doesn't because we're going to freeze not the assessment on the property.
Correct.
We're going to freeze the tax bill. And if that's $1,000 that he pays in 2023, and for some reason or another, and it's going to happen this year, there will be people that would get tax breaks this year because these guys are rolling back their levies 70 and 80, 40 cents, applied to what that number is, um, established in that base. I know that gets complicated, but those levies adjust every year based upon maybe levy increases, uh, that are voted on by the people, bond issues that's voted upon the people, um, but at the same time, that's paid sometimes, that's go down based upon rolling levies back. So we're going to freeze it, but if it goes below that, we're going to go ahead and give them this credit, but then we're going to give them the additional credit too. If their assessed valuation is $1,500 and they paid $1,000, but now it's only $8, the difference is between the 15 and the 8, not the 1,000 and the 8.
So the difference would always be between the current year, the tax total is being calculated, and the year of the baseline. And their only, the only possibility is a credit, which, uh, my reading of the law is that that's intended to be a negative amount, a credit toward their tax bill. Uh, it's not intended that it would be a positive amount and therefore increase their tax bill if over a period of time their taxes... I'll, I'll take the example of a destroyed home. Uh, if your home was destroyed, its valuation goes down, if you choose not to replace it, you would end up with a much lower tax bill. And, uh, the intent of a tax credit, first off, in a destroyed home case, a, a resident can't claim that as their homestead because they have to be living there. But, uh, you, you wouldn't have a negative tax bill, uh, but you also wouldn't have a credit amount that exceeds whatever the liability is based upon the assessment and the total of all the levies.
Well, I would just ask, um, Monday, and you asked for data, these guys, this is their first week of school and to be able to go back and crunch data and get it to you by Monday, it's probably not realistic. Um, so these guys know kind of what their percentages are, but we have no idea on what the amounts that we're looking at. We're just asking, please, push pause. Please give an opportunity for people to work together. Allow us to maintain the quality of our school districts, at the same time make sure that seniors can stay in their home. And I think that if we make that decision 48 to 72 hours from now, that's pretty critical. I want to thank you all for the meetings and opportunity for us to, to visit and, uh, we'll be available through the process. With this, one last question, will this go to your committee in the afternoon and go to the full coun- council or the whole legislature?
If it comes out of committee, it could be introduced and adopted immediately in the next legislative meeting, that same day. So could Monday be, well, would be approved from committee and then sent to the legislature and picked up and adopted the same day?
If it doesn't pass on that day and you do push pause, the process to try to figure an implementation plan, what would it look like?
The legislature has, uh, eight weeks of, since introduction before it expires on the table. Uh, it could die, it could move forward, it could be amended, and there's a lot of options, um, within that process that could occur theoretically.
We just ask that you might watch. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett, I think you were going to say something else? Anyone else that I say be ready here?
Okay, I, I've, uh, I've heard both sides now, senior citizens versus the schools. So it seems like the root problem here is that the assessments have jumped so, you know, so erratically, you know, some people got 7%, some got over 100%. So is, does the legislature near the county have any authority to make some kind of a law or ordinance that says all assessments this year would be some X percent? And, you know, if Frank doesn't like it, get these six people in the legislature that say, no, uh, we're going to override your veto, Frank. Um, because...
Been there, done that several times.
Been there, done there?
Let me answer that first question or maybe Sean can share some of this answer too, or, or, uh, Vice Chair Marshall. Um, so the answer is some of this is not within our authority as a legislative body, but that doesn't mean it's not in the authority of members of the county. And so, uh, the executive has some ability there to do what you're suggesting. The board of equalization has an opportunity to do what you're suggesting. Uh, the state also has that opportunity. So there, there are pathways that we've in fact exported in resolution to suggest that, that what you're, what you're proposing be enacted and advocated for in the future, that the legislative body does have, uh, that opportunity. I think that was something both legislator Smith and I sponsored, uh, freeze your up to 15% while you continue to find the assessed values. Um, however, there's been no action from any of those entities hasn't yet. Um, by all means, feel free, either of you if you want to weigh in beyond that. I was trying to ask there as well, so...
It just seems like that that could be a way to delay, like people are saying, to slow down until they can come up with a more thorough thought-out thing, but, but, you know, it would put a limit on how much the taxes go up. And so...
It would seem that that would be a very common opportunity for us to find that around...
I'm looking at the root cause here because, you know, as an electrical engineer, you, you go to the root and not, you don't treat the symptoms, you go down to the basic thing that caused the problem in the first place. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
I will do my best to lead that as you said it, uh, to not provoke any other issue. Uh, but yes, you are correct. There, there is a missing element here that could provide a lot of solutions that's not the nicest way to say that. Any other final comments from anyone in the audience that would like to share their testimony? I think we'll go one round, um, with folks just to provide closing statement opportunity.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. Uh, I, uh, with the extreme weather and, and other factors, I, I recognize that for a lot of folks, uh, school openings and just all kinds of things, it's, it's a commitment to be here and express your opinion. It's, uh, important for us to hear all those things. Uh, I personally sponsored this, heard, uh, quite a little bit of concern about how we would implement it, whether or not it was, um, going to be a challenge, uh, and, and, uh, landed on the side of sponsoring it, uh, really to make sure that this dialogue happened, uh, not just within our community, but, uh, within everybody that's potentially impacted by this. So I, uh, I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to make sure that you guys all understand that, uh, what we're, I think, all collectively trying to do is find the best resolutions, uh, the best solutions possible. Uh, and, uh, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, I think the opportunity to, to offer some sort of, uh, relief to people who could be harmed because of, um, these challenging assessments that we've had, while at the same time, uh, not rendering our schools or other municipal bodies, uh, uh, you know, putting them in a place where they can't properly fund their budgets. I, I think it's there, but I think these kind of conversations and a well-thought-out plan are all part of, uh, how we get there. There's aspects of this that are very urgent to certain people. You heard testimony from people who said, with this new assessment, I won't be able to stay in my home. And if that's the case, then that creates new, uh, costs and burdens on, on our community and our society that none of us want and also doesn't help school budgets or municipal budgets. Um, and, uh, we're faced with, um, an urgency that is unnatural... And we're faced with an urgency that is unnatural. Normally, things are very deliberative. That's the intent for a lot of government. And in this case, because that bill is going to arrive no matter what we do, and once it's mailed, and even today, I've heard from constituents who are making decisions to leave the community because they see this happening, and it's not a new thing. This dependence on this revenue stream, which is a wonderful and steady revenue stream for which governments can plan, has just been disrupted by an assessment process that's got some challenges. And so, we're not sitting up here saying this is a perfect solution. And by any stretch, we're hearing and trying to figure out what the best fix is for the several challenges that we have. And I appreciate everybody keeping an open mind and helping us think through that.
Thank you all for coming here and spending your time this evening for the superintendents. It's four representatives who spoke. I appreciate your insight into what's going on here, each individual areas. I will say that this is not easy. It was easy, it would have been done already. But it's a very complex situation, and the sustainability of our county, of our school districts, is important. Like I said earlier, our school districts are what reinforce the values of our properties and the sustainability of our neighborhoods. So, with every decision that I make individually, I look through a lens of doing what's best for everyone, to the best of my ability, and taking in all the information that I have available to me. So, I will, I'll just leave it at that. But I will say that you all have my commitment to really use a lot of resources to make the best decision possible. And I will definitely be reaching out to individual school districts to help reinforce my knowledge continuously as we work through this process and even into textures in the future, because this is an ongoing thing, and things are going to evolve, and situations are going to change the longer that we're here. So, I welcome that relationship building, and I just appreciate everyone here this evening.
Where to start as to end? I do want to acknowledge and really drive home a statement that was made by one of our educators. The fact that we are fifty in the nation in education in the state of Missouri should be something that we're all... That reality unfortunately is primarily, unfortunately, the issue of the state and their direct funding or modification of the funding sources. And that is something that weighs heavy on me, and I'm sure that my colleagues as well. So, it is important that we have these discussions. And I do echo that reality, that this is a discussion, and that this is not something that is being done to any one person with direct analysis, but it is in an attempt to find the best solution for the most amount of people. I do want to thank Granby Consulting School District for inviting us here and hosting us this evening, for Dr. Southwick for opening the door for these conversations to be even had, because he is correct. I would have gone a path where this would have been enacted already at the time that we're sitting here. So, thank you for those efforts. I also want to acknowledge the realities that this is a nonpartisan issue. There are Democrats and Republicans here at this table. There are Democrats and Republicans who are advocating for changes to what's occurred through the assessment process. I also wanted to renew focus on the state as a commonplace for a lot of solutions that we don't have authority to change and solve that could be a lot faster and more efficient. And I know that there are several of us up here and in the audience who proposed ideas and concepts in an advocacy role to try and change state law to make it more effective and useful for individuals within the legislative body. Equally so, the control of the assessment department itself. So, those are other realities. This is one portion of the broader issue around assessment, but it's a very important one. So, we will take this information that we had tonight and that we've had earlier this week, and any other information that we have leading up to the legislative process seriously and with the understanding and balance that we're going to have a heavy decision to make. So, again, as my colleagues have suggested, thank you all for making the commitment to be here tonight, to be a part of this process, and know that we are taking all of this consideration to heart, and we have a tough decision to make. So, thank you all. I think several of us will be here for a little bit longer. We're listed until seven-thirty, but no doubt for at least our school administrators who've been working all day, I'm sure that you all would like to get home, as well as our constituencies. So, thank you all for being here, and we'll stick around a little bit longer if you have individual questions.
In the committee meeting.
I'm sorry?
In the committee meeting. Adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Legislature. That is a very good point. So, without any further business, before the committee, look at my colleagues, in case this is a curveball that I'll try and catch. We will now end, without objection to the committee, at six fifty-two. Thank you all again for being here.